Your life, Mr. Chairman.
Hey, welcome everybody. Today is October 4th. This is our weekly county commissioner meeting. This time I would please ask everyone to rise and say the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks, Dave. Everybody have a chance to look at the agenda. There's no additions or corrections. I make entertain a motion to approve.
I move to approve the agenda for October 4th.
Who's in second? No one favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. First item up on our agenda, these are all action items, is the meeting minutes of September 27th. And I thank Dave and Cherry too for covering for me for that day.
Actually, Mr. Chairman, it should say September 20th. I apologize. September 27th, there was not a meeting.
Okay.
I only saw one typo, I think.
And I made that change, yep.
Was that in the last paragraph? That's something in the last paragraph. It always...
So I entertain a motion to approve unless there's any additions or changes.
I'll make the motion that we approve the meeting minutes of September 27th.
Second.
Who's in second? In all favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. You want Dave to sign this?
Uh, who?
You know, I wish to hear.
You can sign it, it's okay.
Okay. We're holding the minutes. Okay, the next item up on the agenda, this is also an action item, is consideration of joining the opioid settlement agreement with the state of Idaho. And we were down at IAC last week and had a big discussion about this. I think it would be appropriate for us to pursue this with the state. It could bring in some funds that we could use for opioid education and maybe some, possibly some treatment stuff. And I think we should join the lawsuit.
I agree, and the more counties that join that lawsuit, the higher the opportunities are financially, so they recommend it highly that we do that.
Yeah, I have an argument with that.
I need a motion?
I have. Go for it.
I move that we approve joining the opioid settlement agreement with the state of Idaho.
Who's in second? Doug, do we have something we signed and sent to them, or you just let them know?
I don't know, Mr. Chairman. I did not see any type of formal document. If the commissioners would be inclined to write a formal document instead of just the meeting minutes, we can potentially prepare something for you to review and sign. We can also reach out to the state attorney general's office to find out exactly what they're in need of.
Okay. And we have a motion in second? All favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. So do you want to do that, Doug, or you want me to?
I can reach out to them and find out and then let the commissioners know.
Then we'll move on down our list. Our next agenda item is also an action item. This is pathology services agreement between Valley County and AD County. And these folks do a lot of our burial investigations and deaths investigations, that kind of stuff. If I remember right, it's the same as last year, Doug, as far as cost.
I don't see how you remember any of them. We sign way too many agreements to remember.
Um, let's...
There was an agreement number on it, I didn't know.
Don't remember. It was so much an hour, wasn't it, Doug? Hundred and ninety?
It depends what type of services they're performing for us, but I do not think the fees have changed. It's under payments.
Okay.
Section six.
Scott's already signed it. All three of us sign this.
Everybody good with that?
Hey, the storage fee for bodies is $65 a day.
Doug, did Scott have this prior to his budget? I mean, I'm assuming that this is all in his budget, so...
Correct.
No, autopsy now is 1,300, plus toxicology and x-rays. What the $150 additional cost is for each body that comes into AD County. I talked to Scott about this, I think he had four or five people down there right now. We use this quite a bit. So I entertain a motion to approve this?
I'll make the motion that we approve the pathology services agreement between Valley County and AD County.
Second.
Who's in second? All favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Okay, the next agenda item is also an action item. This is to sign resolution 21-24, authorizing destruction of county records. And this is something we do every year. We have policy on what can and can't be destroyed. Things timeout, which means they can come up and be shredded. You have that resolution, Doug, sir? So the documents are the 2018 DMV daily registration, receipts, deposits, credit card receipts, dealer titles, motor vehicle records from 2017. Title applications, disability placard applications. And then there's also the personal property declarations from 1988 to 2015. Court cases filed prior to 2021. Court auditor audio prior to 2011, and elections prior to 2017.
And Doug, do they scan all this in?
Not all of it is, but the majority of those documents are.
Okay, I was just looking at the assessor personal property declarations. Looked like there was quite a few years there, so I was hoping they were getting caught up on scanning.
I don't know that answer to that question.
Well, I would assume so before they, hopefully before they destroyed the paper. But entertain a motion to approve this?
I move to approve resolution 21-24, authorizing the destruction of the county records.
Who's in second? All favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Here, our next action item is approval of the certificate of county levies for Valley County. So we have, I didn't think we got this done, we do, huh?
Yeah, bear with me one second.
Sure.
Sorry.
Larry, when I see you in your glasses, I expect there to be blues music playing somewhere.
I thought I'm moonwalking up there, but I'd fall down.
I couldn't resist.
It looks like you should be on the cover of a Rolling Stones magazine.
Something in Nashville or...
Something.
What I was...
Oh, sorry.
No, that's okay. What I was, what I'm trying to put together, and I've been trying to get a hold of somebody recently, is October is breast cancer awareness month, and one of our sites down in Tonkawalls, they offer fifteen cans.
Oh, cool.
With a cancer emblem on it. And so it's a $50 donation, and then you keep the can forever.
Nice.
And I want to work with St. Luke's, be able to take the money to donate. But I have tried twice down there, and people were supposed to call me back, and nobody has. So I don't know who...
So have you reached out to Amber Green and McCall?
Who I should reach out to?
I would reach out to Amber...
Laura Crawford.
Or Laura Crawford. Laura Crawford's their marketing person, communications person. Amber...
I knew we had a cancer specific in here. I thought I needed to use the one basically.
I would just start with them.
Okay, Doug, go ahead on the county levies.
Mr. Chairman, thank you, sir. We have been diligently working on the certificate of the county levies for Valley County for all of the taxing districts within Valley County, reviewing their L2 worksheets, making sure that they were accurate, making sure that they weren't levying over the amount that they were able to levy for. This year, I'm not going to lie, has been a bit difficult with House Bill 389 and the change in the L2 forms, so it did take us a little bit longer to get through these. We have submitted those to the state. This is the commissioner's opportunity to review the levies that are going to be implemented and ask any questions that they might have. I apologize for the delay on just handing these to you now. The only comment that I would like to make or make the commissioners aware of is if you look at the Valley County one, it does not have the road included in the Valley County. It's a separate on page two of three. It includes the Valley County Road Department levy under Idaho Code 40-801B. Just so we're fully aware, that is the code that allows for levying of the road department, where you will not be sharing that 50% with the cities within the incorporated district. So the county will have the ability to levy, utilize that funding for special projects, for grants. So that's where the Valley County will be allowed to levy is under 40-801B. What I'm asking, why I'm bringing this to your attention, I'm asking the state tax commission why it's not included in the top section under the Valley County levy. They were going to take a look at that, because really it should be that levy and the levy showing would be the total amount Valley County is going to be levying for.
40-801B, is that the levy we can only do for two years?
No, that's the levy. That's correct. That would be a temporary levy. This levy, the Valley County or the counties can levy for, but they can, they're not required to share that, those tax dollars with the cities, the 50% requirement.
So is that the max we can levy for the road department?
The max, yes.
This is the max?
This is not the max. The max is, I think it's one, I'll have to read the code, I think it's .02.
Right.
But this takes all of the foregone and blends those two things together. So for this year, this line item will actually separate out the 800,000 or whatever it was that we identified.
775,000, yes.
775, for the road department.
Correct.
Yeah, okay.
What I'm concerned about then is this would be the base budget that we would start with for roads from here on. I mean, can we raise this 3%? The levy and all, that budget?
You would be able to, I guess...
Does that make sense?
I'm not following your question, but this, our base amount that Valley County will be able to levy for will increase to 8.2 million dollars. If the commissioners budgeting next year determine that they don't need to levy for the road department, this foregone is now on the books to be able to levy for in the future or potentially not levy for, yes. So it's added on to the tax roll now, yes.
It can come and go throughout the years.
Yes.
That's okay.
It can go up to that 3% plus new construction, so...
Correct.
Determine, you know.
Depending if legislation makes any type of changes regarding new construction, and yeah, we'll just kind of have to wait and see. But to answer your question, 8.2 million dollars is going, taxable amount is going to go on the Valley County tax roll.
The other thing that's really interesting on this, if you go back to the first page and look at the county, most of our levy rate goes into justice. It's all mostly court...
It's current expense.
Yeah.
Right? If you, I mean, it makes sense because the majority of the expenses are under general fund, under the O1. I mean, we have all of the departments under that O1.
So current expense, no justice fund. That's general.
We don't have a justice fund. A lot, some Valley, excuse me, some counties do have a justice fund where they levy for sheriff's office under the justice fund, courts under the justice fund. Valley County has always chosen not to have a justice fund.
So that current expense is general fund, so our largest is general. So when we're talking district court, you can see that line item.
While you're reviewing that, just to share with you, the state tax commission has shared with us that they will not have the levy certified until October 25th. They are asking for patience this year, just to give opportunity to review all of the certifications that have been filed with them for the 44 counties, for the numerous taxing districts. They're going to take some time, which they do every year, but this year I think they're going to wait to certify, to present us with our certification on October 25th, which is the deadline per code. And they did indicate to us at the conference that they will be able to meet that deadline as of right now.
Doug, where's Valley Center Cemetery? Second page up.
You're asking where the location is, or I can research that and let you know. I think that incorporates a few cemeteries. I think Crown Point is included in that.
Finn Church?
I don't think it's Finn Church. I don't think Finn Church is included in that.
No, and what's the other one? South of Finn Church, Spink?
I can let you know, which...
I've never heard of that before. Valley Center Cemetery.
Yeah, they've been levying for several years.
Doug, the South Lake Rec Sewer and Water, it's on page three. So do they have to provide, I guess what I'm questioning overall is, they've been collecting money now for like 20 years. Can they just continue to collect until somebody either does something with it, or...
Yes.
They have to do a petition to remove it?
Uh...
And that, so you know that guy is not returning any of my calls?
So they collect annually, I can review, if you don't mind, I can tell you what it is. I think it's like 18,000 a year.
That's fine.
But they do require the same, they do have the same requirements where they're required to publish their budget, where they're required to have a public hearing. And if those steps have been followed, then they submit their L2 worksheet to us with proof of their publication, and then they collect the tax dollars. How they expend those tax dollars is really up to that taxing district. If they just continue to levy and collect that without expending them, that is something that they have the ability to do. Until, you know...
Doug, do you have any idea how much money they have?
I don't. That's not something...
Is there any way to find out, though?
You could submit a public records request.
They have a little over 300,000, according to their director. 300, 350 that they work...
And are they paying their help too? Are they paying anybody?
I don't know the answer to that. We could actually request their budget probably, but... Did you see the email? Don't call the office, call his cell phone.
Mm-hmm. Not getting anywhere.
Okay, I was just curious how they had to justify that or how they had to ask for it.
They just publish it, they provide us with an L2, they follow the same steps as any other taxing district would.
And then the Donley Library? I don't see that under the Donley. Oh, there we go.
That's...
It's totally separate.
Yeah, it's totally separate.
Yeah, I tried to encourage them when they were forming that to raise more funds, but they didn't want to go more than that, so that's pretty low. Any more questions for Doug? I entertain a motion then to approve the certificate of county levies.
I'll make the motion to approve the certificate of county levies.
Second.
Who's in second? We don't sign anything, Doug?
No, I signed the bottom on behalf of the commissioners.
Doug, who's in second? All favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
And just to let you know, once this, I'll submit this to the state. Once the state has the opportunity to review the levies for Valley County, they send us a certification. We then provide that to the treasurer's office, and then they in fact enter in the levies for taxes to be collected.
And they have to have that to the treasurer by when?
October 25th is what it's at.
Yeah. Okay, our last item on this agenda is also an action item. This is approval of signing the state lease. Oaky, are you on?
You know what? I don't think we've gotten him on yet.
Let's wait, he wants to call in. See if we can get ahold of him.
Larry, we ever had to spray for noxious weeds on any of those parking lots?
On IDL parking lots?
Yeah.
No.
Oh my gosh. See, I've never seen any up there, so I was just curious.
No, we do on, on all our properties, we spray.
I was asking a question on the fire mitigation. You guys have never had to do anything specific to the fire?
We put up signage every year as soon as, as soon as we get in that...
Welcome to Life Size. Enter the extension of the person you want to call for the meeting.
And brush crack, brush crack could be for IDL fires, and Wellington is for the federal fires. They can use it.
So now that we're trying to go more year round?
Joining the meetings.
Any difference?
I think it's a discussion that's going to come up.
That's a big part of the discussion for sure.
Yeah.
Is that you, Oak?
It's me.
Okay, I was just trying to call you, so you can know yourself. Are we on our state lease agenda right now? And wanted your thoughts on us going ahead and forward with that. I know that this is something we've been working on for quite some time, and we would really like to move this forward today if we could. We can't, Larry's shaking his...
Go ahead.
Larry's shaking his head that we can't, so maybe this is all moot.
Yeah, the lease is back at the AG's office with some concerns that Oaky had, and they're going to work on it. My call from Oracle was that maybe sometimes after the snow flies, we'll have something. I'm going to, I'm trying to talk to Todd Wernick, I'm having a meeting today. We're going to try to get a, some kind of a one-year agreement, because we've got probably 10 days worth of maintenance to do on those trails. I'm going to try to get an agreement for that.
So, Oak, did you hear that?
I, yeah, I heard most of it. When, when Larry sent the proposed permit around Tuesday, Wednesday last week, I reviewed it and had had a number of questions, and they're mainly surrounded, surrounding this new process of issuing a permit instead of an MOU. And that, that process may very well be fine, but the permit, as they proposed it, was not very clear as to our authority to regulate, regulate the parking lot and charge a fee, which those two things I know were important to the county to be able to have. They make, they do make a vague reference in one of the addendums to the permit that we can charge a fee and we can, we can write rules, but what it doesn't say is under whose authority. Is that, is that the county's authority, or is that Department of Land's authority that's delegated to us? And, and I think that is so vague that without some clarification, and I guess it needs to come from them, you know, I just wouldn't feel comfortable saying, "Go ahead and, you know, post a sign, charge people with trespassing who are not following the rules and, and collect a fee without, without those issues being resolved." So I did reach out to IDL attorneys with the questions that I have and have not heard back yet.
Oak, do you feel like it, this is going to stop the whole process, or do you expect they'll answer you back here fairly quick on that?
I, I'm hopeful, I mean, I don't know what their timeframe is. I'm hopeful that we can get this resolved quickly. I, you know, I can certainly reach out and tell them that we've got, we've got some time sensitive, some time sensitive matter and see where we're at. But I, you know, I can't, I can't answer for how long it's going to take them to...
Sure, sure.
To get back to me.
But I think it would be great if you did that to maybe kind of push it a little bit. It would be nice to get this done before we get snow. I don't want to wait till then because things have a way of falling apart, and then we won't have any kind of solo bill program this year.
Yeah.
Oak, if you could maybe do that and then get back to us.
I wouldn't suspect that it would, it would take that long. I know their lead attorney and can call her and kind of let her know that we're, we're trying to get, get things ironed out and ready to go, you know, so we can, we can be ready, ready before the snow flies. But without, you know, given the, given the history that we've had with these, with these issues and some of the players that have questioned, questioned primarily the Department of Land's process, having, having these things ironed out before we just go ahead and sign, I think is in everybody's best interest.
Hey, Oaky, this is Dave. Were you, were you kind of worried about, there's an attachment, attachment A on there, I believe is what it is, and it has a section about fees. Is that the section that you were concerned about?
Yeah, yeah. I mean, there's just that, just that passing reference in an attachment to the permit that says we can go ahead and, you know, and in MOU, like we've historically done, those, those things can be addressed in the MOU specifically, and it's clear under what authority we can charge a fee. You know, now that they've decided to go this permit process, it's kind of, it's very similar to, you know, grazing permit. You know, we're, we're really not taking over any kind of management responsibility for state land. We're just, we're just given a permit to be there for a defined period of time. And that in and of itself does not grant any, any authorities to manage, manage state property, which would include writing rules, restricting access, and charging a fee. So I think we need a little bit more clarification in this document to feel comfortable that we've got the authority to do, to do those things.
Brian, do you think that it would behoove the county, though, to move forward with this as an underlying agreement in place to allow us to start doing some maintenance while trying to amend? Or do you think that takes away any negotiation?
I personally, I think we should just ask first.
Well...
Sorry, go ahead, Oaky.
I didn't, I didn't catch what you said, Dave.
I was just saying, I think that we could probably work through the local office to go ahead and do some maintenance. I mean, I think that they'll allow us to, whether it's through a permit or a special exemption to do the maintenance that's required for the upcoming season. I don't think that's going to be a holdup.
My, my goal, my, my goal, I'm going to call, I'm going to call Angela Kaufman, she's the lead attorney for land today, and, and see if we can't get this all, all figured out so we can have it in front of the board by next, by next Monday's meeting. If that's not possible, then certainly figure out how we can... If that's not possible, then, uh, certainly figure out how we can, uh, you know, just logistically get stuff, uh, prepped and ready to go for the, the winter months.
Because if it is just about fees, I mean, we could wait one year in order to, you know, put a fee in place up there too while we work through this. Trying to clarify that a little bit further if, you know, if it's gonna slow down the process too much, but.
So one of the things I was
Yeah.
Larry, will you lift up that microphone, maybe that will help. There you go.
Hmm. Just a second. One of the comments that was made to me by Todd is that IDL would prefer, this agreement is a two-year agreement and he would prefer, they would prefer to go back to a one-year agreement because this is a land use permit and they wanna come back next year with an MOU that includes everything. I mean, that was their long-term goal in the first place was the MOU, but they didn't feel. So by doing it as a land use permit, they could do it through Scott's office. By doing it as an MOU, it's gotta go through the, the whole thing again.
Larry, is there a way that, if push comes to shove, we could just renew the last year's lease?
Um, I'll, I'll ask Scott. I, they're meeting up at Crown Point today, so I'm hoping to get together with all those, the, the whole group is up there.
Well, I guess my feeling is, and I hope everybody is saying that, see if Oakie can get this done by next week and get it on the agenda, we can move forward. But in the meantime, I think you need to go ahead and continue your winter maintenance and keep going because don't we, we're still under the old lease until this one is signed, correct?
No.
No?
No, no.
That, that expired December 31st of 2020.
Oh my, so we've been doing it without a lease for?
Yeah, that's what I was gonna say, is we didn't have a lease at all last year.
Hmm. Well, I think everybody understands that we do really need to push this one hard if we can to get it done, so.
I think if the Trident lawsuits were going on, they'd have it done already. It's just, everybody's busy. Two days.
So I guess at this time, we will table this one into a future date. Hopefully within the next week or two and we can get this done.
And I'll email everybody at the end of the day how the conversations go with Scott and Todd and all others.
Okay, is that good with you, Oak?
Yeah, sounds good.
All right, thanks, everyone.
Thanks.
We'll move on down to our next agenda.
Thanks.
Uh, this next agenda item is not an action item. This is just a discussion on the condition of solid waste transfer side. And I know we have quite a few different issues up there. Scott is here from Lakeshore and Scott is here from Buildings and Grounds. You wanna go first? Condition? I know that we're running out of room for Woody biomass.
Well, we had a meeting with Chris. Dave and I, Oakie up there. The site did get kind of cleaned up overnight, um, and repairs done to the building. It seems to be, uh, a manpower issue or something, you know, and drivers. And just the, the upper deck, you know, with all this new development going, trying to handle all the, all the, um, brush that they're bringing in and stuff. You know, kicking around ideas of, you know, chipping, recycling, trying to do something, um, to, um, you know, make the pile smaller, you know, maybe try to do some composting, uh, throwing out ideas there. Looking at, uh, the construction mixed loads, um, you know, they come in with concrete, you know, timbers, uh, sheet rock and they just, you know, they end up dumping it on the floor cause they don't wanna separate it out, which, uh, that's one of the reasons it ends up damaging the buildings. That stuff ends up damaging Scott's trailers, um, and stuff is what it does. Trying to look at ideas, either, um, double or triple the fee to bring that in or make it mandatory that they separate it out and they won't be able to, um, put it there cause it's just, um, it's so cheap for them, just tear a building down, throw it on our floor up there and then, um, like I say, it's, it's causing a burden and a problem with the transfer to our buildings and to his, uh, you know, equipment and trailers and stuff. So, um, we talked about with that, um, talking with Chris, um, as far as their manpower issue. They've done, um, they did a pay raise schedule, uh, tried to entice more employees. It sounds like their competition matched that, so it sounds like they're doing another one. Try and, um, you know, increase the manpower up there, um, so we can keep up with the load up there and things. But I don't know, you know, if, what we've got to look at some ideas, cause we just can't handle the brush from all this development, you know. The developers have gotta come up with something to deal with it, either chip it on their sites or do something, cause it's, we just can't handle our, our upper, doesn't have the capacity at the rate things are growing to deal with it.
You know, Scott, or maybe this is the other Scott question, didn't we do a Woody debris pile down in the Lake Fork shop? Site one year to handle some of that? Did we allow some of the commercial guys to dump down there because we were out of room? Do you remember that?
I do not remember that.
I think Meckel dumps down there, the stuff he collects. Um, if I'm not, you know, correct.
That's on his property.
Well, I thought he was there.
Was it on ours?
I thought he was putting it, we'd have to talk with Jeff or something, but I thought that, uh, like when they do the, you know, dump it, don't burn deal, his, they take it and then dump it actually at the Lake Fork, um, out there at that site and I think.
Oh, yeah, that happened.
And I don't know if throughout the year, what he do, what he collects, if he takes it there. The girls said they do see some Meckel trucks come up with stuff and dump, so I don't know if he's using both sites. And I was kind of wondering if we need to have an alternative site, you know, to dump some of the Woody debris cause, you know, at the way these developers are, are clearing land around here, it's just, uh, beyond, um, the space we have to handle it.
Well, I know one year Gordon went up there and I don't know where he got it, maybe it was a county excavator, but he crawled up on top of that pile and started piling things up closer to make more room.
Yeah.
Unfortunately, I have never run an excavator, so I'm not gonna volunteer to do that, but
Yeah.
I could do it and learn it, maybe someday, but, um, I know the county has a D8 at Lake Fork, but I don't know if it's still available or if it's even running. But the last time you guys rented a cat was the last year, year before to clean it all up and kind of level that site out, is that cat still available?
So currently, um, I actually have that cat come in.
Good.
Last Friday, a week ago. We have plenty of room now to get through the year in the, in the brush pile. We were able to, I don't know if you remember, when we looked up there and we were talking about building the berms and that. So we built the berm and it backfired on us, cause everybody dumped on the
Wrong side of the berm.
Wrong side of the berm. So I went up there and pushed all of that and removed that berm and created another berm so that it opened that space back up. I think that there's a lot of space up there if we rearrange where we put things. I don't think that the C and D pile gets a lot of use. I mean, there's a lot of stuff there, but nothing compared to the brush pile. So I feel, go ahead.
Is the C and D, are they dumping it, doing the MRF instead of bringing it up there?
Well.
Cause it's not short.
So, okay, so, so you're gonna have the, the greater of two evils, right? Either people are gonna continue to dump that C and D in there on the tip floor. But then if we rearrange things up there, whether it's mandatory or, or they decide that, you know, the, the cost isn't cost effective when they start separating it, then yes, we will increase that pile. But as of, like, the information that I know as of October 4th is that pile is, is very small compared to how it has been in years past even. I think that if, so Chris Welker, who's my, my manager, he's been at some facilities before that have actually taken even the C and D lumber. And they bought a machine and they made wood pellets for burning in wood pellet stoves. It bagged it, it did, it did everything. And then people would, would purchase that. I think that that would be something for us to consider going into the future. Obviously, there, there'd have to be some infrastructure there with the building and, you know, to store it and that kind of thing. But I think we could definitely keep down on that quota. And it would be a way for the county to, to recycle what, what we've taken up there. And for definitely, everybody needs, everybody needs tea. So.
And I'd like to think outside.
Find in the woods.
I'd like to think outside the box a little bit too. I can't remember what meeting I was just in, but they were asking about all of the, the Woody debris that's up there. I mean, if we invested for our future in some kind of a huge chipper. And, I mean, Payette's doing it and they actually then turn around and sell it as compost. They have a great composting, uh, project.
Yeah, so I've actually seen their facility in Payette several times and it's a very good, it works really, really well for them. There is some costs there and, you know, you can't just chip it and put it in a pile and then turn it over with a loader. There's actually a machine that rolls it and turns the windrow piles over and it lets it, you know, does its thing. I think they even put, uh, I think they even put worms in there and some different things. And I don't know what all exactly goes into that, but, um, that does take some space because of the, it doesn't mean that we don't have it. We would just have to use part of that where the old landfill used to be, um, behind the Woody debris pile and the brush pile, there's that big flat up there. That hasn't been used from my understanding for over 10 years or 12 years. And I don't, well, I think it's been actually longer than that. It's probably been close to 12. I do know that there is a, like, how long you have to wait before you can use it stipulation? And I don't know what that is. I don't remember. So.
I know one year we hired, um, Jerry Ikola to come in and chip that pile and it was over 70 grand. And so then we started working with Juan at Donnelly Fire and they came in and were able to get a permit from DEQ to burn it in the wintertime and save us those funds.
We also heard from a lot of people that get smoked out when they're burning that, so. It's kind of, you can't make anybody happy.
And we've been dealing with smoke all summer.
I, I think that up there, the, cause the fire department, what they do is they come up there and they light it off, get it going and then we take care of it from there. So they're not like extinguishing it or anything like that. We're rolling it with a dozer.
One of the things you were saying too, or I think you were saying when we were up at the facility, was that it's kind of problematic with the dozer is you're pushing a lot of dirt in there, which kind of smothers it as well, so it don't get a complete burn on it.
Yeah.
Which makes it a little more troublesome.
Yeah.
You said something about not liking being in there.
Yeah. Being in there with a dozer, you get blinded. Is that?
The fire department's not there. I mean, they don't leave anything on site to help you guys if what happens if a spark flies.
Well.
They'll burn it until it smells.
In January, when we do it, they, it, it happens January. Usually they do it on presidency weekend. They light both piles off on Saturday morning and then because the county's closed on Monday, then they tell us to have it out Monday night, the C and D pile. The brush pile will burn for six to eight, 10 weeks. How long the brush pile burns? It's big.
Bet the girls up there just love that.
Well, and that's why I would question like being smoked out, like, cause it's up on the hill. And usually our, our winds come from the west and it's blowing everything just right into the, right up the hill to the west and the girls are to the south and I don't know of any homes.
They had complaints from the Carefree subdivision last year.
Oh, really?
Well, I know it's a lot cheaper to do it that way than it is to chip it. We hauled it over to Tamarack Mill and I think we got $4 a ton. We still ended up having to pay over 70,000 him that day.
So the other option is we know a, a person down in the valley who's getting into this mulching, um, program down there. We're in touch with him to find out if he might be interested in coming up and mulching some of those down to his place and, and, no, not, not chipped possibly, or maybe he brings a chipper, I don't know. So, either way, I think if we, cause in that aspect, so like our labor and all of that is not covered by any of it, we're doing that. There's no, the county's not getting any feed for it and our labor isn't being covered either by when we burn it. So I think we, we have a few different options to look at. I think this year we, unless something happens right away where we can get rid of it, I think we'll just wait until January and we'll just have to.
But Scott, I think part of a lot of that is in your contract that you have to do that.
I have to do what?
That you have to take care of the Woody debris.
So that is true, you do have to, we do have to take care of it. But just like the tires, the metal, when we take care of that, then we get paid for taking care of that by the, by the recycle, by the metal pile.
Right.
When it gets sold, that's how we, we get the 15%. Just like on the tires, we get the 50%. That's how we cover our labor costs for taking care of those. So there's no labor cost coverage for taking care of those others. In the contract, it was, it's not 100% clear, I don't believe, about the, you know, how it's disposed of or how it's taken care of, but there is a 15% there on however it's taken care of.
Well, one of the things you might wanna keep in the back of your mind is I know Jerry Ikola still has that chipper. And he may want, just for the material, I don't know. When we got the bill now, we were all pretty shocked about, not only was he making the money selling it, but he also got paid from the county to chip it. And we didn't think that was the right way to treat taxpayers, so we quit doing that. That's when we started burning.
Well, I think we have these other, I think these other options are better.
You know, I think there's an opportunity too to reach out to a third party on this. You know, thinking about like the compressed pellets or the logs that we were talking about at, at the meeting we were up there is, I just looked at some of the folks that are doing that up in northern Idaho and they basically just have, uh, an agreement with the sawmills. They go and get the scraps from the sawmills and the dust and then take it back to their facility and turn them into those compressed logs and the pellets both.
Oh, okay.
So that might be something.
Did you say that was in Grangefield?
No, they're out in north Idaho. I think it was like Bonners County, I'd have to look it back up again. But there's two or three outfits up there that are doing that and that might be an opportunity for us to either A, sell it or B, maybe they could even set up a facility that would manufacture those closer down here.
Yeah, our, I know Grangefield, I think they have Rocky Mountain pellets or something there in Grangefield. So there could definitely be some options there. You know, maybe we chip it into a truck and take the chips up to them and they supply the trucks and the chipper, I don't know. So there's lots of different avenues that we wanna explore with, with that.
Maybe what we could do, Dave, is you, you could get that information and we could give them a call or Scott gave them a call or something and see if they'd be interested. But usually these kind of deals, it's just cause they don't know it's available.
Yeah.
If they can get something for free, they might be pretty interested in it just for relieving us of that problem, but.
Right.
We gotta see what they need to make pellets, cause most of the pellets are made out of the sawdust. They don't have pine needles and bark and stuff like that. And so it has to be a fairly clean product, dry product to make the pellets with. So if we're chipping limbs with bark and pine needles and everything on it, I don't know if that's viable product to make pellets out of. But, um, we need to separate our, you know, the logs out from the branches and, um, you know, it's something to look at. We need something, an alternative method to work up there than just, all this just gets piled up every year and burned and.
I was, I was thinking too about the, the construction material. I was, I was thinking too about the, the construction materials pile because I mean, that would actually be better for what that manufacturing process is, I think. I don't know if there's a machine that grinds that kind of stuff up or not, but.
Yeah, we gotta have something because all the nails and spikes and stuff in it, they're, you know, I'm not quite sure how they handle that. You know, how they would process that material. I know when I live in Garden Valley there, they, the wafer, they weren't allowed to throw the wafer board in the construction. It had to be separated. Any of the, any of the laminated stuff had to go in a bin by itself and only dimensional lumber got to go up to the burn pile. They said it was by like law or something because when it burns, it gives off toxic fumes. So I don't know if that's, you know, if we need to stop them from doing that, make them separated out to deal with it.
Well, and I think we still, we hadn't really talked about like the debris, the mixed loads coming in. I think that's something else we need to address. I mean, based on what you guys were talking about up there. Just the, the amount of material, the volume of that material takes up so much more room in your trailers than garbage itself does because, you know, you got boards and all this other stuff that don't compress into the truck. So we're wasting money on transport too with that material. So I think that's still something else.
But they're expensive.
Something else that we want to talk about as far as whether we want to increase the fees on that or, you know, require them to separate it because that is a big part of the problem. I mean, a couple of days that I've been up there, I've seen, you know, large dump trailers coming in and just it's, it's piles of everything.
It's more cost effective for them to go out at this point. Labor versus disposal costs, so they just mix everything in it. And it does, you know, we are able to get our weights on our trailers heavier. And it's the gentleman up there is Eric, who's the main operator that, that does most of the loading. And he's got it down to a pretty good science on how to load a trailer with that mixed debris in there. It's not, you can't just grab and go as it comes in. Otherwise the trailers, and I can, I can say that Eric was out for a few days during free dump week, myself and another guy was up there and we were two or three tons light every trailer because we were just grabbing everything that was coming in and we were loading it. The problem with that is you're not getting the heavy material as it comes in and placing it where it needs to be on the trailer. So there really is kind of a an art to his, his madness up there as far as how he loads those trailers and we get, we get a good weight. Guess what I'm saying is it could be worse if a guy like me was loading it. So I think that if, if that material was removed from the process, I think that we would see less hauls, less loads being hauled out. And hauls that we're going to be hauling cleaner loads to the landfill. We're going to be putting cleaner garbage into the landfill than what we are doing currently.
Is there such a thing as cleaner garbage?
Yes, there is.
Yeah, just go up there and look at it.
One day in my shoes and you'll learn what clean garbage is.
The other question I have for you, Scott, is I talked to a guy down at IC and he, the waste study that we had done, he said it is available and then sent you a copy of it.
Yeah.
Can you forward that as electronic? Can you forward that to us? And I think part of that discussion that we need to look at is this, this mixed waste is coming in to the, or if I think we need to look at. Making these companies sort it out into wood and cement.
Yeah, it was, it was studying on fees is what it was.
Right.
And stuff. He's also supposed to give me some names because our floor up there is shot inside that building and he was supposed to forward information to me on people that come in and resurface the floor in there because we do have exposed rebar. Our trench drain across the center is, we're out and gone. It's stuff. So there's no way to really wash it down in there and go somewhere with that wastewater because there's a tank out there it's supposed to go into so we can contain it. So the floor needs work. Travis Piles' name, he is supposed to forward me information on who does that type of work. So I can get that forwarded to you.
So maybe what we ought to consider is in the next week or two when we get the study, we can have a chance to look at it is for all of us to sit down and talk about this in a work session to figure it out and we can talk about fees then as well. I think part of the issue appears we're missing some of our commercial folks that probably should have a commercial dumpsters that have residential and then I think we need to probably, I don't know how we're going to do it because we've fought this in the past. Sort out big commercial versus little commercial and the mom and pop stores and how far do you go with this, but sit down and have another work session on this and start solving the issues.
Yeah, because that's what it's supposed to do. They're trying to make it more equitable, you know, with the little mom and pop gal down here selling coffees, paying the same thing as Albertson's or Shore Lodge. Try and the scale and that's what's in, in the report and stuff.
Anything that has a, anything that has a business title to it is commercial on our side. So.
And then there are some commercial places that compact their garbage, you know, Scott?
Yes.
And which is, it should be a different rate than loose garbage. And these are the things we need to talk about. Really need to sit down and talk about. So if you could get us that study here sometime this week and we can all take a look at it and we'll try and put together a work session where all of us can sit down doing this and then let us know if Travis gets ahold of you on that floor.
Yeah.
I think that's the next big push right now is to fix that floor.
Yep.
Or winter.
If we can get it before winter.
It would be, well, it's going to be really tough to do it during winter, but early winter would be the best as far as shutting one side down and opening up the other side. The only two things that I would like to add is Lake Shore is looking at adding a third operator up there. That would be stationed at the, on top. Where the brush and the metal is and all of that. Obviously in the flow times, he's going to be down below, you know, doing letter patrol, things like that, not necessarily spending ten hours a day out there, but up there enough to monitor, monitor it more frequently than what it's and getting the attention that it needs more than it's currently now. At the influx that the county has seen and just people moving here, that's increased our, our solid waste and just all, all types of waste. And so we're trying to catch up with that demand.
And we knew this was coming.
Yeah. And the, the only other thing that I would like to, just for you guys' information is a transfer station this size does tip with the amount of volume that we bring in, which we're getting pretty close to seventeen this year.
Seventeen thousand ton?
Yeah.
Wow, that went up fast.
So we're getting close to that. I can get exact figures when we meet. But anything, you know, that fifteen tonnage range usually has three bays. Instead of just the two that are there. I think that there is definitely some room for expansion there. Depending on which way the county decides to go with their fees and how we're going to manage this. We kind of determine the urgency of that rather, you know. Those are the two things.
Scott, we should probably do a capital improvement plan for that next year and find out what it's going to cost.
Yeah.
Do that, go through the CIP.
And then one thing Chris brought up, there was also, they have like a netting he was talking about around. That can kind of go around.
It's like the golf course, driving range netting.
Yeah, so try to help control some of the loose stuff, you know, it, it'll capture it and then it can be, you know, collected and and help, you know, control the spread of the loose stuff that does get blown around and birds drag out or, and stuff too. And things.
We talked a little bit about the noxious weed issue up there too. We have a pretty serious noxious weed problem. Even just right there in the area and, you know, I said, it seems like within reason for our weed department to go up and spray our property.
Yeah, multiple times per year, not just, you know, once they need, they need to kind of monitor it a little bit or talk with Steve about it and and get them up there to get it killed before it has gotten to the point like it is this year.
Well, you're probably getting a lot of weed seed in the trash, so that would make a lot of sense to me that.
The only thing that we're doing with that dozer right now is we're working when you come up the hill and you make the right bank there, we've worked that down to where it's bushes and the trees and now we can actually walk down there and pick trash up. And around the corner, the person that was there prior to Cindy.
Oh, my gosh.
You remember?
Yeah, that was a long time ago, man.
So, I can't remember. There was a lot of concrete. So the Scale Shack faces west and I'm talking about the hill that's to the south. Just twenty feet that drops down. We're trying to clean that up with the dozer so that we can get down there and get that garbage cleaned up. But it was, when I looked down the hill, it's pretty rough trying to get over all that. So we're trying to clean that up. So what we're thinking for that netting is we would go from the corner and come up around and then we would start again and go all the way around where the trailers are. But we'll use the dozer and what I, not that anything is going to happen, you know, like April first at this point, what I'm trying to do is be prepared for that. So if we can get this ground cleaned up, get those weeds out of there, get the, you know, the bushes and the concrete and everything kind of smoothed out there where it's more of a nice even bank, we may even bring some dirt from, from on, onsite there over to kind of cover some of that concrete up. And then down below, we can set holes up with netting like at a golf course. And everything would go into that netting and we'd be able to go down there and you know, pick it up right there, so.
Maybe build a little access road down in there so you can get down in there with this.
So there's currently an access road there.
Is there?
We're recutting it so you can see it better, but there is one there. So we're just going to kind of cut that back in so that we can get down there safely and get things cleaned up. But nothing worse, I think I was telling Dave when we were up there that trying to pick up garbage in the bushes is like near impossible. So we get rid of all that stuff and now we can actually rake it and clean it up, get our loader down there, you know, put everything in the bucket and do a dump it. We're not just trying to go out there and sift through bushes and trees and everything else. And there's no large trees. I'm also working on some signage for up there. Several signs. And we'll see how they, they go. I don't know how signage goes, but you gotta have it. At least then there's, they don't have an excuse. So. As, I mean, that's, that's what we're working on currently.
Hey, well, it sounds like we've got kind of a plan formulated. We'll get together here in a week or two and and look at this study and maybe do some more work on the mixed destruction waste and see if we can't figure out a way to get that sorted. And, well, from there, I'll try and get up there maybe this week, but I'll give you a call. When I'm headed up there, we can meet up there, walk around, look at stuff.
For sure.
Okay, anything else?
Yeah, Doug, can you get me on the agenda for a, for a residential PI?
What's a PI?
Price increase.
Oh, okay.
Residential.
Nope, don't put him on there. Poor Scott.
I know, I know. It's all right. I'm the whooping boy.
You're the whooping boy. Okay, we got to move on. Anything else? We're all good?
Yep.
Um, we need to talk too about recycle and the mud hole and all that kind of stuff. And I think we need to go out from, instead of having the road department do that work, let's try and find somebody that could do that locally.
That's what, you know, Scott, you know, emailed me with that little rain and snow we did have. Sorry, people complaining. Felt wanted to reach out to maybe Simpson. He did the pad, you know, he finished up the grading for the pad. Or, you know, granite seems to be so buried in work, you know.
Jeff had said he was going to try to get somebody out there Thursday or Friday last week. And he said he had some larger material that he was going to try to put in there to smooth things out, going in and out and making the approach a little bit better. The big thing is the holes that are inside the enclosure. I mean, it's, it's tough in there.
I think what would be good is if we could get that granite base, you know, that, just that it's road base. It's what all the roads around here are made up of, that crushed granite. If we got that in there real, real good, you know, three or four inches thick and let people drive on it for a year, then after that, we'd have a pretty good base and we could decide do we want to put, you know, crushed road mix or do we want to asphalt it or whatever the county wants to do, but I think that would give us a really good base in there because that stuff kind of settles in and gets hard and compacts and we just need enough of it that it's not getting compacted.
Well, it's a new site, so we knew this was going to happen, but I think, and Dave, you correct me if I'm wrong, but I think the goal on it was eventually getting it paved. So that we can roll the rollers and everything would take the abuse.
Since it's fill, anything we put on it, once the water goes through it, it turns to that gumbo under there, it's just going to sink into it. I think they almost need to come in and take it down.
Take it up.
And, you know, and then, you know, maybe put road or pit run or larger stuff down and then put that over the top of it. You know, I'm not a, a road builder. I don't know, but you know, I've seen it a number of times. You, you know, you throw a rock over something, it gets wet, it just sinks into it and now you've got a mud bog with rock in it.
I agree with you, Scott. I know. I think we need to take some out before we go back with some new.
Yeah, and stuff, so.
I think if we keep in mind the long-term goal is to get that paved.
Yeah, right now Jeff's got so much on his plate, they don't have time to try.
And that's why I think we need to go with an outside.
Do we know if he got over there last week at all?
I don't know if he did or not. Wasn't really around much last week, so.
I went in there. I can't remember what day it was. I think I went in there Thursday or, Thursday or Friday. I think that was Friday morning.
I think that was when he said he was going to try to get over there, so.
Yeah, I was probably just beat him because I was there.
Yeah, he may not have. I just was wondering if, give him a call before we figure it out.
I know several, I know several contractors that could do a job like that pretty quickly.
Yeah.
They'll be in here later, so we can ask him.
Yeah, we'll talk to him when he comes in later. I think he's coming in eleven.
Look at the drainage too. They're going to have to come here and kind of look how, you know, to do it so we get the proper drainage out of there. They also got to be aware of that, the guy that put the fence in, the two gates come together, he drove a big pipe down in the ground for the lock to go in. So anything coming through there, if they need to cut it down, those are in the ground there. So they need to be made aware of that, so. I don't think we can just throw something on top of what we got there and it'd be satisfactory.
No, I think you, I agree with you.
Well, I know the rock that they took down last year is going.
Yeah, it goes away.
It just goes away. It's amazing. All right, thanks Scott for your help.
Where does it go though? Just keep adding more. It just keeps going.
Hey, at this time, we're going to recess as the Valley County Board of County Commissioners and reconvene as the Valley County EMS district. We have an action item. We need to renew the EMS contracts from McCall, Donley and Cascade Roll Fire for two thousand twenty-two and I think everybody got those contracts. And I believe they're pretty much the same as last year. Juan, do you have anything you want to add? You're all good? And we can do them all, one at a time or we can do all three of them together, whatever you want to do.
Do you need a motion to actually go into the EMS?
No, I don't think so. You can just reconvene, can't you, Doug?
I think you can do it either way, Mr. Chairman.
I didn't see anything on the contract, so I would vote that move to approve the renewal of the EMS contracts with McCall, Donley, Cascade, Roll Fire.
I'll second that.
Luke didn't second it. I'm trying to find the dead bird things.
It came in a separate email. It was just the three of them.
I think that came out Friday.
Friday, wasn't it you?
From Doug.
Me thirty. We're so helpful to each other, aren't we?
How's everything with you, Juan?
Just doesn't.
Okay, staying busy?
Pretty busy.
Yeah.
Is it going through the?
I have three people out right now. Oh, you're kidding me. We only have eleven people left to watch. All non-vaxxers.
So we have a motion and a second on the floor to approve all three contracts. So in favor, please say aye.
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 All right, motion carried. And I think all three of us signed these.
My, my commissioner meeting's on Wednesday, Doug, so I'll get it signed then.
That's great.
Will you just email me the signature once and then I can put the signatures on top and email back? All right, thank you.
Thanks, Juan. Appreciate you coming in.
Can you stick around? I have a piece of mail for you that I'd like to get to you.
Okay.
It's nothing, I think it's just one of those, the.
I don't know why they keep sending them here. I changed the.
I don't know why they keep sending them here. I change the email or the address every year to mine. The SHSP grant and the NPG grant have gone through. We should be getting that paperwork.
Oh, good.
And there's another supplemental NPG grant because they lowered the original to make up for the difference in cost for the EM. That should be coming out in a month.
How much did they lower it?
Twenty-four hundred dollars. They changed the algorithm so it lowered it.
This is going to happen every year?
I'm going to have to revert to the lower wage unless you guys want to continue to pay me the same. It won't hit exactly fifty percent. We'll have to talk about that.
When that comes up, when you do. I don't think we want to do that. We could cut the commissioner's salary, but that's about the only salary we could cut, I think.
We can discuss it. I have a good idea, Larry.
Nope, greed does not pay off in the long run. Just got an email from Rest Duke and the hospital ICU numbers are going down. Maybe we're through it.
There wasn't only six beds available last week, so going down could be now there's ten beds.
Right, now there's seven. Hey, uh, how's that road construction been affecting you guys?
We've got such good rapport with the foreman and the, and uh, line people that he just, he doesn't stop us at all. We get a lot of dirty luck from everybody as we drive by.
Fair enough.
We don't have to wait.
You're used to dirty luck, so, you know, I mean, it's part of the job. Yeah.
There was a big wreck on Norwood this weekend.
Yeah, that, they're going to have to do something. That's the third one this year where we found major injuries.
Norwood. Norwood, where was it? Norwood and Roseberry or?
And Norwood.
Johnson and Norwood.
Were they running stop signs?
I don't know. It's always in McCall's district and it's always in that same area. It's the third one this year there.
Somebody was killed there.
Yeah. I didn't know who it was, but I heard it was a seventy-one year old man.
Norwood and Johnson, huh?
Well, and I, I was trying to think of that intersection. I think it's just flat and open.
I don't know. Have to ask chief and call.
Well, we'll talk to Jeff about it. He's supposed to be in here. See if we can do something to slow people down.
Third one. Same spot. It's pretty scary.
It's like Cobarton Road and my place around to Cobarton Bridge. It's like a highway now. They'll hit the gravel and then everybody slows down there, but I used to fish off the bridge. I don't do that anymore.
Farm-to-market highway. The new highway. We're going to make that a four-liner.
The thing is, is every time we make the roads better, I mean, that little old section of Old State Street now is like a flipping and it's like a racetrack.
I'm concerned about where that little culvert is. They made it higher with no rail. We always get wrecks there in the winters to slide right off into that tree.
An Old State, an Old State Highway? Which road are you talking about?
An Old State.
Guess I haven't seen that.
I mean, it's just like the road just goes to nothing to big ten-foot drop off now.
Great.
We've had some major wrecks there over the last few years. I was going to talk to Jeff, see if we could, you know, put a sign or something to these people on the road.
We're going to start putting guard rail up on county roads now?
Not even guard rail, just a sign. So people will have to like avoid the sign and then they'll avoid that edge. Even if, yeah, hear something. I'll talk to them.
Norwood and Johnson?
You know what it is? Johnson is, it's where you can't see that stop sign. You come up.
Johnson out.
It's.
Johnson's north of Franklin.
Yes, it is the Franklin Road.
Oh, God.
So it's that blind intersection that pops out right there because you can't see that stop sign. I mean, it's like you're within probably seventy feet and then all of a sudden there's a stop sign in a T-intersection. And the cross traffic is coming up Mission, you know, on Norwood and.
Is there a sign that says stop sign ahead?
No.
I wonder if we should just put a stop sign ahead.
Or even a crossroad sign on Norwood too. No, I've seen that a couple of times and now they've extended Johnson on across. They're building houses in there. There's probably more traffic going back and forth even from that west side.
There is a house that's on that north east corner. As a matter of fact, that's one of the firefighters. His parents. His parents.
Oh, boy.
Yeah, we should talk about the signage there.
For you. Okay. Stop around, sorry.
Okay, thanks Juan. We're now going to, uh, what's the word I'm looking for? Doug, get out of it.
Or, yeah, you can, uh, what's it called?
You're going to adjourn.
Going to adjourn from the EMS district and reconvene as the Valley County Commissioners and we have an action item. We actually got about twelve minutes, so we can wait for that. Decision on credit card fee moratorium. We'll wait until we get some folks here. We have a moratorium on credit card fees.
I, I think my understanding, there was some a, a matter that was brought up by the treasurer's office, I believe, about not charging fees. To see if we can have an increase of people utilizing credit card. I, I, that's just kind of what I recall. I don't.
I thought we did that here a few years back.
Hey, was it kind of an effort to keep people out of the courthouse? Oh, I said, I think it came up as part of the COVID discussion that we had last week is that that would be a good way to can kind of give people incentive not to come in.
Oh, I got you.
If they could pay over the phone without a fee. Uh, there she is.
Do you remember what it was? It was to try to lessen the foot.
I don't think I was here.
I wasn't here that week.
Oh, so it was kind of one of those options to help relieve foot traffic through the winter time with flu and COVID and everything is if we take that, if the county were to take that two and a half, our department has a two and a half percent fee.
And we have, what's the MRF?
MRF, we, we pay for that one because we don't take, we don't take cards or cash up there.
Thought we did.
No, not cards. We don't take cash.
We just take checks and card.
Checks and cards. So it was one of those deals when the cash was taken off the table, they decide, the county decided to take, they pay the credit card fees.
Um, we got about ten minutes where we can legally talk about this.
Oh, that was just.
If you could look into see how much we paid in credit card fees last year, I think it was twenty-seven thousand.
For the treasurer's office?
What, if you got, if that's possible? Thanks. We'll see you in ten minutes. If you need a break, now would be a good time to take one.
Chody's got on sunglasses too. We just need to have a blues band around here. I'm going to put my sunglasses.
How about cooking western?